There we go.
Instant.
Good evening, I would like to welcome everyone to the January 30th meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:00. And to start off, as always, I'll see if there are any citizens who have any comments. Any citizens' comments this evening?
I'll just make a quick comment. Do I just sit here or what?
You need to, well, no, you, nope, nope. You need to identify yourself and what town you're from, and understand that the policy is that each speaker is limited to three minutes. And this is an opportunity for you to share comments to something related to the agenda. And we will not engage in a discussion. The comments are directed to the chair. And we do not hear complaints or comments about an individual school personnel, nor any member of the school community, including school committee members or individual students. And it looks like you may be the only one, so the rest is moot. So.
Hi, I'm Danielle Huff. I live in Stowe. I'm really here to hear about the full-day kindergarten, and if that's going to be free, or if there's a plan or proposal moving forward on that issue. So I am a little bit concerned right now that we do pay for that. As I see my tax money going up, I might not have an idea of exactly the budget. I guess I'm just one of those people, if we want to make it happen, let's talk about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And it is on the agenda, and we have a presentation from the superintendent. And we'll go from there. Thank you for your comment. Okay. We have student recognition from the Worcester County Superintendent's Scholar.
Right, we do.
And Paul Deen-Minical is going to join us. And this young lady is...
Caitlin.
Caitlin.
Caitlin. Nice to meet you. Welcome Caitlin, welcome to our table. It's so nice to have you here.
Thank you for having me.
So I think Principal Deen-Minical is going to do a bit of an overview and explain kind of what the Worcester County Superintendent Roundtable does with our scholars. And I think you're going to talk to us a little bit about some of the good things that she's done.
Yep. The Worcester County Superintendent's Scholars Luncheon. It's a mouthful, but it's more than that. It's a wonderful opportunity for superintendents and principals to get together with students. Having thrown Worcester County, and this year we all came together Holy Cross, had lunch together. Students were recognized, we had a keynote speaker, just a wonderful event. And I think one of the things that came out of it that was really special was what a great conversationalist Caitlin is. I think for most students, being in a car with the superintendent and the principal would be a very nerve-wracking experience. You wouldn't know it based on the conversation we had. It was really, it was full of laughs, and it was a lot of fun. As you can imagine, Caitlin is a remarkable student on many fronts. She's a member of the National Honor Society, has taken a very rigorous and demanding course load over her four years. In addition, she has achieved excellence and has been recognized with awards in APUS History, American Lit, Biology, Spanish II, Algebra II. She also was the Neshoba recipient of the Harvard Book Award last year. She's passionate about math and science, and she aspires to pursue a career in biomedical or chemical engineering. She plays both midfield and defense for our varsity soccer team. She's contributed over the past three years significantly to the team's success. She's not only a dedicated player, but a very coachable player, which I think as any coach or AD would tell you is a significant thing. In addition to being a player, she's also a coach and camp counselor for the Neshoba Girls Soccer Youth Clinic. And as a member of the Interact Club, which is a community service club at Neshoba, Caitlin has participated in multiple community service opportunities on her own, in the town of Bolton, and throughout the district. She has, let's see, whether it's a local book drive, the Stowe Dogler 5K, Save a Dog Animal Shelter, the Fruitlands Museum, the Bolton Public Library, it goes on and on. So she has certainly paid it forward, so to speak. And lastly, she's been a regular ambassador for our incoming freshman classes, kind of initiate them and welcome them into Neshoba. So it's been wonderful having you at the school. We know great things await you moving forward. And we just want to publicly recognize and congratulate you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Caitlin, just very quickly too, I would say, I thoroughly enjoyed my time with you. It was just, it was so much fun, I would have to agree. It was a lot of laughs, and it was just really enjoyable time. And it was one of those moments as a superintendent, when you sit in that huge ballroom, like we sat in that day, because that was enormous. And I got, by the way, if you ever want the video, I videoed the whole thing for you if you care, Mom and Dad ever wanted, I've got it on my phone, I'd be happy to send that along to you. But it was one of those moments in time when as a superintendent, you sit there and you can't be prouder than watching someone like you be up there and represent us. If we could just clone you, you are exactly the end product of what we work so hard around this table and in our classrooms for. We are so proud of your efforts, and we thank you so much. And with that, we have a small presentation to give you. And I know that Assistant Superintendent McQuire is going to take some more pictures because we've been taking enough while we're getting ready of you, and put them all over Twitter. So we thank you so much for coming tonight and for being publicly recognized tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you. It's a little heavy. So we're going to turn around here, and we'll, Paul, we're going to want to get a picture of you as well.
Oh, okay.
So why don't we get a picture of you and Caitlin, and then I'll take a picture of Caitlin.
Sure.
One more?
Yep.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Awesome, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We're creating its own little greenhouse to go outside. You have a lesson on this today. They're so pretty. Thank you Caitlin.
Thank you for having me.
I almost like to just warm your heart.
I know, it's nice to start off.
Yeah, it's a great way to start the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, school committee chair updates. The only thing I have is just a reminder to work that at our next meeting on February 13th, that we would like a snapshot or an overview of all the requests for additional FTEs for staffing with an explanation of the need.
Yeah.
Okay. Student representative report.
All right, so for arts and music, rehearsals have been going strong over the past few weeks in preparation for the March performances of Mary Poppins. The music and dances have been coming along tremendously, and everyone is very excited for the shows. There will be a symphonic band concert on Sunday, February 10th, at Neshoba, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. in the auditorium. Many band and choir students are also getting excited for their upcoming trip to Disney over February vacation. Neshoba had four choir students audition for the All-State Ensemble last weekend. We are still waiting to hear the results, but from what we heard, the auditions went very well. Neshoba Class Plays will be held next Friday, February 8th, where the different grades will compete against each other in their student-run and directed shows to see who can put on the best performance. They're always fun to watch, and we are eager to see who can take home the trophy. So switching to sports, it was an unfortunate outcome for the boys' hockey team Monday, losing to Worcester 5-0. This puts their record at 5-8, but they hope to improve upon that tonight in their game against Grafton. The girls' team won, the girls' hockey team, won their game against Saint Peter Marion last week, making their record 8-4. They will face native tonight. The boys' basketball team also faced a loss recently against Groton Dunstable by a score of 31-54, but the girls' team was able to secure a five-point win. The wrestling team has been on a roll the entire season with a record of 6-0, and they look to make it seven tonight in their match against Quavon. One of the Neshoba students, Kaylee McMahon, was recently selected to be on the U-17 U.S. Women's National Field Hockey Team recently. In April, she will head with the team to Cologne, Germany, to face the U-16 German and Belgian national teams.
Wow. Can you imagine?
I can't believe it.
That's amazing.
The sixth annual NRSD Play Day was held last weekend for the district's middle school basketball teams to come to the high school and compete against each other with coaching from high school, basketball coaches, and players. Everybody had lots of fun. So we have a big event coming up. Mr. A., as well as members of Neshoba DECA, have planned a fundraiser at the Battle Road Brew House on Wednesday, February 13th, for Mr. Terri Alt. Mr. Terri Alt has been recently struggling with cancer, and Neshoba DECA wanted to create a fundraiser to try to give back as much as possible, because he was always a huge help in everything related to DECA for the four years that his son went to the high school. It is from 6:30 to 9:30, and tickets are on sale for $20, and it is ages 21.
Great, that's okay. Thank you so much. Always give us the big picture, comprehensive look at what's going across.
Trying to cover as much as I can find.
You're doing a great job, we appreciate it. Thanks so much. Okay, superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. So just to mention, there's a booklet sitting in your place there, I think Assistant Superintendent McQuire just passed it out, and that's the ABC's annual report for the Espaing Valley Collaborative. So that's just for you to take home and add your literature and kind of peruse it and see, see what good things it has to say in there. A couple of things I'm going to talk about, and the first probably is the closest to Colin's heart, school closures and delayed starts. Just because that comes up every year, and I think every year I need to kind of revisit just very, very quickly. So I wrote something, and I'm going to kind of speak to it quickly, and at the end, if you've got any questions. And I know that most of the school committee members sitting around the table already know this, but I think it's a good thing just to review again. School closures and delayed school starts are just a part of our way of life in New England, it's just part of what happens with here. The school superintendent works in concert with the director of facilities, the local DPW leads, and other local superintendents when making the decision on how to proceed, whether to do a delayed start, whether a status quo, whether it's going to be a closure. The decisions are not made in isolation. The simple geography of the land means that what happens in one community may not be what happens in another community, no matter how close it is to us. We also take into account our area roads, the equipment's readiness to clear and prep roadways, anticipated time to clear both the main and side roads, our bus access, our school access, and all things linked to staff and student safety. Other factors, such as temperature, for example, can even play a role. We make every attempt to have the decision made before 5:30 a.m. It's generally made just after 5:00 in the morning, and it takes approximately about half an hour for us to send out all the messaging that we do. In general, the superintendent will not indicate that school is open. So parents, staff, and students should always expect that school is open and on time unless you receive messaging from either my office or your principal's office that suggests something differently. On occasion, and I did that this morning, if warranted, additional messaging may be sent out via Twitter. So for example, I'll just talk about this morning, between 4:00 and 4:30 this morning, our director of facilities had already been in contact with all of the DPW leads. We knew from their experience, they said, "We can get these roads ready, the schools will be ready, you're going to be fine to start on time, don't worry about this, we've got this." Now, we're kind of a little flatter, but someplace like Littleton, where it's got more heels and that kind of, it can be a totally different story over there than it is here, even though we're linked closely. One of the things we have to worry about, of course, is some of those narrow roads, you know, that are in the back, you know, I think even as I drive in some of our back areas behind our buildings, those roads tend to be very narrow. So those are things, all things that we take into account. But I just want to stress there, these decisions are never made in isolation. Superintendent, generally about 4:00 as well, also starts to connect with a group of other superintendents. So there's generally about 15 of us that are always online from 4:00 on that are local superintendents, and they're all the folks that belong to the Espaing Valley Collaborative. So you have a pretty good idea of where everybody's at. Shrewsbury, for example, got a little bit more snow than anybody expected, it was just like one of those little bursts of snow that hit there harder than, so we would not in Neshoba do what Shrewsbury did. So sometimes we can do the same things, and other times we just can't. We make the decision based on what's going on in our communities. When I talk about equipment, sometimes there are communities, and I saw that this morning several times, things didn't start, or, and so I have to delay school now because, you know, our DPW can't get this vehicle and this vehicle, and you'll see stuff like that happen too. So sometimes vehicle failure plays a piece in this as well. But this morning, that really didn't happen, although we did have one small thing, but thanks to our DPW here in Bolton, they stepped in right away and helped us. It was just a small thing, but it made our lives infinitely easier. So, you know, we're really blessed in these three communities, and everybody works so closely together at that time of the morning. So I do try to make the decision by 5:30. When I see school districts start to make the decision after 5:30, from our lens, that's too late. If I haven't made the decision at 5:30, I can't do anything because our buses have started, and we're already on the go. So that 5:00 to 5:30 is the key window for us. So I just want to put that out there, because I don't know whether you all thought I was in the back room making a decision by myself or not, and that's just not what happens here, so. Professional development update, I'm going to turn to Assistant Superintendent McQuire.
Sure.
Can you do a quick update for us?
Absolutely. So we're gearing up for our March 8th full-day PD session in the district, and professional development continues throughout the district in preparation for that. That's a day-long PD series that's tied to this year's theme of empowering students. The Teaching and Learning Department is gearing up for our visit from George Curros, who is the author of The Innovator's Mindset, which several of our faculty and staff participated in some book studies since last year on, as well as our administrators. He will be here on March 8th, 2019, to deliver the keynote address and also offer some workshops on innovation and empowering learners. Other workshop sessions will also include training with virtual and augmented reality goggles from Google, Jamboard, coding, media literacy, PBS Learning Media will be here, Generation Citizen tied to the new social studies frameworks and standards that have come down, and a bunch of other innovative teaching and learning practices. We will also welcome Education Commissioner Jeff Riley on March 8th, as he visits the school district, as well as many other teachers and leaders from area schools. We've also sent an invite out to the Espaing Valley Collaborative, and it's gotten and generated a tremendous amount of interest around that day. So we're excited about that, and it's right around the corner.
We'll be hosting all kinds of different school districts here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very excited about that. Very excited.
Thank you.
The next one, budget. I just want to say thank you so much to the school committee members from Saturday. I know that's a long haul, I know it's a lot of information, but it's always a great starting point for us, I mean, to lay everything out. And I just want to go back and remind you the history, three years ago, it was asked of us that we present all of the asks that come in to us. And so I want to keep that in mind, so that Saturday morning is when the principals and all of the other district leadership comes to present all of their asks. They all know, just as you all know, we can never give all of that. But that's why we've done it that way. And so now, of course, the Monday after, then we get to work internally, and we start having multiple meetings with the different groups, and we start to chop away at it and say, okay, what can we do, or what can we defer, what can't we defer, what has to happen? We take a look at our plans, we take a look at new frameworks that are coming in, like the social studies, or the new frameworks with the science, the next-generation science stamps. All of those things all play a really important part to us, for us. So remember that Saturday was kind of the starting point. It's my hope that we will have a lot of the work done by the next February 13th meeting, and then hopefully February 27th is just kind of a wrap-up on any lost questions, anything, so that you've got time to digest anything more before we go into March, because remember that we have to vote on it in March. So just to kind of lay that out a little bit. But I really appreciate it, because I know that you could be home with your families. I know this is a voluntary position. As a school committee member, I'm so appreciative when you give up that much time on a weekend to come and spend with us. I want to also thank my administrative team. I couldn't have been prouder of our administrative team. I mean, they do such an amazing job, they know their buildings, they know their units, they know their budgets inside out, and it's just, it's just such a fabulous team to work with, I just feel so incredibly blessed. So we've finished the first kind of draft, I'm going to go through some cuts to the asks that we made in the last couple of days since Saturday, so you'll get that, and then again on the 13th, you'll see it even more cut back. The last thing is, and I'm just so proud of this too, I know that I've brought it up a couple of times, but finally, we've gotten back from our publisher, our School Crisis Death Handbook. And I'm thrilled, this was my work of passion all summer, to go through and do this, and that was, you'll remember the old flip chart that we used to have, and this is now what it looks like. This is all completely in compliance, this has passed before our nurses, our nursing team. We had a group that did a lot of work on some of it last year. It was really a man with undertaking, and I'm thrilled that we're, we've got it done, and it's already sent out to our schools. So congrats to everyone involved in that. And that's it for me.
Okay, well, thank you. I know that was a major undertaking and a necessary one.
Yes.
And I think that it's astonishing to me that we existed so well without something comprehensive like that, so thank you for your leadership and pulling it all together.
Thank you, I appreciate you saying that, thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions for Brooke Guitard? Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. You spent a lot of time on school closures, which is great, but I was wondering, are the schools ever used weather companies or emergency services?
Actually, yes, and I know that Don Mo was here tonight, and he could probably help, but in our, for example, in Bolton, I believe, is Florence Sawyer, right, is the, is our shelter?
We don't have an official shelter. In order to be an official shelter, you have to be able to provide food, you have to have certain sanitary facilities, you have to have a generator, and there are some other criteria.
So I mistake that, I thought, honestly, I thought the Florence Sawyer wasn't designated, so I apologize for that.
Could we get information, it would be good information to have, you know, not tomorrow or next weekend, but just so that we know the extent to which the schools would be utilized in an emergency situation.
And just to spring from his point, you know, you have to make sure that you have a generator that generates certain components to make sure, so, yeah, there's, so I apologize for that, but we'll take, we'll take another look at that, so certainly I'll...
I know, oftentimes it is the schools where that happens, but it might be good information to have just in general for each community, you know, if they're in an emergency situation in each of the three towns where we're really direct.
For instance, Kathy, there was talk a few years ago after an ice storm that maybe AUC could be utilized, but I think that's deteriorated to the point where that may no longer be feasible.
Thank you. Great question. It's good information to have, and thank you, Lynn. Okay. We have several requests for approval for travel and field trips, and Aleah was kind enough to pull together the motions, and I've asked Lynn to read them at the appropriate time. So we're going to hear first from Paul again about DECA and travel approval.
Thank you, Aleah. So it's that time of year again, DECA, which is an organization that fosters leadership and entrepreneurship in students. They had the first tournament, local tournament, a few weeks ago. They've got the state tournament coming up in early March, that's in Boston, at the Marriott each year. And as Stavros was telling me, he's the, one of the teachers behind it, he said, "Every year, it's bigger and better." And by that, he means every year there are more kids that qualify for states. So this year, the number's up to 119.
Wow.
So that's, that's an extraordinary number of kids to have qualified for the state, for the state tourney in Boston. And then after that comes nationals in Orlando. I want to say that's around the April vacation, somewhere around there, I don't know the exact date for that, but you'll probably be seeing me again to talk to you about that April trip. There are, with 119 kids going, Stavros is in the process of finalizing his last few chaperones, he's got 10 chaperones right now. They'll be leaving on Thursday afternoon, Friday is a PD day in the district, so Stavros and I have been in communication to try to limit the amount of instructional time missed. I think, given that it's an overnight trip with so many kids, we really feel it's important to have as many teachers, as many people in the building who know as many of the kids as possible. So, you know, we've got a range of teachers, we've got even some of the secretarial staff is going as a chaperone. Are there any specific questions that you have based on the information in front of you?
Paul, just to explain the total cost of the trip, is it $415 per student?
Yes, it is.
And the students pay their own way and fundraise? I mean, is that 415, to what extent is that defrayed by fundraising monies?
Depending on the student, because, and these students work with Stavros pretty closely in terms of identifying what need they would have. And that may, that may determine the amount of fundraising that an individual student is doing. Stavros is always working area businesses to try to get support from them, and he works with students on an as-need basis too, to help out as he can. Of course, the chaperone costs are covered by DECA's, you know, what DECA has through all their fundraising activities, it's not passed on to the students.
But any student who wants to go, who is qualified to go is able to go?
Yes.
The cost isn't deducted?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Paul?
This is more on the form.
Oh.
Sorry, this is Todd. It says approximate number of students and approximate number of chaperones, and you said it's 119, and it says 120. I'm sure you're not going to lose kids, but, I mean, does this get updated so that it's the right number of people?
I mean, it gets updated right before they leave for the trip, because it's a verification with the school nurse in terms of what kids are actually going, and every single medical form goes with. So, you know, that it's approximate number right then and there, because sometimes the student gets sick and they cannot go, and so, but it is updated right before they go with all nurses' medical forms, et cetera, and a last, final checkup. So that's why it's approximate on this presentation, but a final number goes out, and then we know exactly which kids are on the trip, and if there are any that are not.
Other questions for Paul or Todd? Okay, Lynn, do you want to make the motion, please?
Motion to approve the Neshoba Regional High School DECA Club to attend the DECA State Career Development Conference in Boston, March 3rd through March 7th, 2019. Approximately 120 students and 12 chaperones will attend.
Okay, a second? Second? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you.
They agree with us, probably, Paul.
Okay, next up, Florence Sawyer School, Washington, DC trip.
Are you going to all do it together? I think that the principals are going to come together, I think that's what their plan was, because it's all middle schools do this, and so I think that, pardon me? No, 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 all, different, no.
That would be something, though. Why don't you guys all just go at the same time? That'd be awesome, don't you think?
We scheduled it on the same days last year to try and facilitate the middle school athletics schedule, and it didn't.
It was not good. All right, so we'll do it this way then, if you insist. So how do you want to handle this?
Sure, so I'll just start, I'll start off, and then I'll turn it over to the principals to go from there. So this is their annual trip that they make every year, and I don't know if they've ever come before the school committee before with this, but this kind of goes along with our newly revised approach, and so we thought it would make sense that they all came at the exact same time, because it's the same type of trip. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. And thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk a little bit of...
And thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk a little bit about this experience for our eighth graders. As Superintendent Clancy said, the experience is pretty consistent. The dates might change a little bit. The number of kids from one school versus another may change a little bit. But our approach to it is consistent in providing students with an opportunity to actively engage our nation's capital and take advantage of everything that the city has to offer. You, I, do you have copies of that?
We've got all of them in front of you.
So our dates are a little bit different. They're, you know, we work with tour companies for availability based on the experience, the experiences that we can look at. But they're, they're pretty similar in terms of the museums and, you know, the trip logistics. It's a four-day, three-night trip for the three schools. And is there anything that you would add?
I would just add that there are, there are direct links to what they experience in Washington DC with what they're learning in their eighth grade social studies classes. So it's not as if there's a divorce there. They're really, I would say that what they're doing in simulations and learning about government in eighth grade, really this is sort of a capstone experience for them where it, it's like an experiential learning moment where they get to really see and be in the places that they've been learning about all year. That being said, I think it's important to note that it's also just a fun experience for kids. And it's something that we go to, you know, pretty good lengths to make sure that they have experiences that are not just academic, but that they're having like a cruise and a dinner and a dance. And for the kids, I think those are.
On the atomic.
On the atomic, exactly. And for kids, I think those are really those sort of memorable moments that you have right before a pretty significant transition to high school. And I think if they were here, you know, to speak for themselves, they'd say that it's a really exciting moment for them and one that they look forward to all year.
Thank you. Laura, do you have anything to add?
I would reiterate that kids just really look forward to it. The teachers look forward to it. They're making those curriculum connections all year long, talking about it, preparing their students for the trip. So when they get there, it's like, wow. And as many times as we've gone, I know I've gone, I still, wow, this is pretty amazing.
I was going to say, I think you know that first half because I think you've been to the last two, have you not?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? This is a regular annual pilgrimage to DC that happens all, every year. No questions?
Just a quick question. I went in the eighth grade. It was an awesome trip. What percentage of the class goes? Are there any kids that don't go?
There are a few. I'd say the percentage is probably at least 85% of, you know, 90s every year. Some parents, you know, will say that they, you know, choose not to. Fundraising, that the piece, financialism rarely a concern. You know, we have ways to help support. Every once in a while we'll run into a conflict with, you know, either athletics or some kind of arts type competition where they simply can't take four days away. But for the most part, they all go.
We've got 79 students in the eighth grade class. Kevin and I, as a matter of fact, we're just recently going over the numbers and we've got 70 of those students attending. That's a pretty high number. Notice that aren't, it's not as if it's because of a financial burden or anything like that. It's really just logistical things in their life or their parents just aren't ready for them to go off. That's quite honestly one of those reasons.
Any other questions? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve.
How come we don't use the same tour company for all three schools?
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, we.
We've always used Suburban. I think you used Suburban last year.
We used Suburban for the last two years and then just thought that we could go with a different company and see if we could get a different, better price.
Okay. You are paying $180 less per kid, so that's.
Well, so it's an interesting question. So where they are different oftentimes ends up looking like, looking at sort of where we stay. You know, so Florence Sawyer School will be outside of, in Arlington, Virginia, Luther Burbank. You're right in DC, right? So I think that adds to it that way.
And the timing of the trips too. You know, if you're going anytime near cherry blossom season, it's a premium. And that really does affect the rates of the hotels. And truthfully, it also just affects availability in a lot of those hotels. Some of the dates that we have looked at, Kevin and I looked at the end of last year, were just were not available because there was conventions or things like that happening.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Lynn will read the motions.
All right, Hale's first.
Okay.
To approve the Hale Middle School eighth grade Washington DC trip on April 8th through 11th, 2019. Seventy students and 10 to 14 chaperones will attend.
Second please?
Second.
Oh, Steve. Any questions, discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Florence Sawyer. To approve Florence Sawyer eighth grade Washington DC trip on April 30th to May 3rd, 2019. Eighty-two students and nine chaperones will attend.
Second? All right. Any questions? All in favor?
To approve the Luther Burbank Middle School, eighth grade, Washington DC field trip on May 28th to the 31st, 2019. Sixty-five students and seven chaperones will attend.
Second? Thank you.
The game is on.
Questions, discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Thank you, I know that it's a wonderful experience for kids, but I know the adults put in a lot of work. And I have chaperoned those trips too, so I know it's above and beyond. But it's a lot of fun. Thank you so much. Sorry, labor of love.
So we're going to keep Laura back for the next one. Hey, principal friend. So Laura has a donation that she'd like to bring forward tonight. So do you want to talk to us a bit about it?
Yes, I'm asking for the committee to accept on behalf of Luther Burbank Middle School a gift donation in the amount of $2,000, which has been offered to our school to help defray the cost of the trip, which will occur on May 28th to May 31st. Specifically, this gift is intended to pay for the cost for two of the two students who requested financial assistance. So we're fortunate that this is actually the second year of a similar request. You may remember that last year we submitted a similar request. And we have a very generous parent benefactor in our community who reaches out and asks me, "How many students have requested financial assistance?" This year we had two families request financial assistance. And he has offered support for the trip, me and his wife. And they wish to remain anonymous and are very, very grateful for their support.
Okay, thank you. Lynn?
Motion to accept the donation in the amount of $2,000 from a Lancaster parent that wishes to remain anonymous. To be used to help defray the cost of the eighth grade Washington DC trip. The two families that have requested financial assistance will attend.
And can I, second please?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, questions? All in favor? Okay.
What a wonderful gift, what a wonderful gift. Thank you so much, principal friend, appreciate that.
Thank you.
May I just add something? Thank you. Just kind of springing out the back of this. With the government shutdown, you likely know that we had a number of families across our own school district who were affected by that. And that was, that was a tough time. And so Tom and I, Tom Poole, our director of food services, and I got together and we sent something out to families just maybe a week or so before the shutdown was over. And said, "If you need some additional assistance, like let us know. We'll immediately say yes and we can, we can make sure that your kids have got what they need when they're here." What amazed me was that even though we got requests in to say, "Yes, you know what? Quietly, I need a little bit of extra help here." We also received, I want to say five or six other emails that said, "Let me know what you need and I will write you a check for this." And I thought, I just, you know, you just want to tear up. That's what makes these communities so special. Moments like that or moments like this where you've got somebody, second year in the row, a row that they've done this in Lancaster. It's just really, really special, so, I mean, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to be hearing a presentation about full-day kindergarten. And there are some other things that we will be discussing on the agenda. I just want to remind folks, I want to encourage discussion, but I also would remind you to please wait, be recognized by the chair so that everybody gets an opportunity. And I'll keep an eye on you guys, so if I see you, I'll call on.
Great. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call up the elementary principals. Again, just as I said about school closures, I don't make decisions in isolation. And this is another one of those moments in time. So I'm going to review, give you a brief overview of how we want to, want to approach this. I know that you all know Principal Will Karen, Principal Bates, and Principal Rocha from our elementary schools. And I feel that this year, as a district, I feel that we're stabilized enough right at this moment in time that we can look a little broader at some things. And that the free full daycare was one of those things that we've had on the back burner. We've done a lot of, a lot of research into a lot of different areas. And we talked about it tonight, we're going to kind of break it into different areas. We're going to talk about numbers because that was certainly one of my concerns, was just the sheer volume or potential volume of additional students coming into the program. So we're going to talk about that for a minute. We're going to talk a little bit more about the cost and the whole notion of the gap year and what that means to us. And then we're going to talk philosophically and we'll turn it over to the principals at that point in time. I think there are certain things that we collectively agree on as an administrative team. And by the way, Joan DeAngelis was in most of these conversations. We often brought Pat in as well because of course there's a money component here. So we wanted to make sure that we looked at it from all angles. So the things that I think we can agree on is I think we all agree that free full daycare may or may not be the right thing for a child coming through the system. I don't think that we sit here tonight and say that this is the only way that it should go. We still believe that parents should have choices, but we're asking you to do a bit of a parent, or I'm asking you to do a bit of a paradigm shift tonight in how we look at this. I think that we also agree that this is probably not just a one-night discussion. I think that we would like to present the information to you tonight, our thinking. And then we'd like to come back and do a revisit of the topic in another meeting or two when it makes sense to come back and have that discussion. I think we've looked at things like the basics in terms of what's pre-existing. Room, of course, do we need more room? Do we need more staff? Do we, what does this look like? So those are all the types of rich discussions. And I would say this is not something that we just started talking about two months ago. This is, we've had this as ongoing discussion almost, I think, since I came, to be honest with you. I think this topic has arisen. And so tonight what I want to present is saying, this is where we stand right now. We'll make a recommendation tonight, but then I think we put it back into the ballpark of the school committee to say, okay, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? And then is this a way for us to look at it? Or would you like us to go back at it, look a little bit differently? If you recall, it really was a task given by the school committee for us to go after this and look at it. And so tonight, we feel that we've come kind of full circle and say, okay, we've taken our time. We believe we've been thoughtful about the process, like everything else we do. And I think we would all agree with this as well. We've not rushed this through. Anytime we had a question, we went back to the DESE and said, "Are we thinking about this right?" We've had the DESE run our numbers for us. So these are not numbers that we're just putting out willy-nilly. These are numbers that we feel that we can stand behind. So I think there are a lot of things that we, we agree on. But of course, we all still look back and say, I think we also agree that it's not necessarily for every single child. So we're not promoting that, but we're saying this is how we see things. If we take a look at our first slide, I'm not sure who's, is Aleah, thank you. When we take a look at the numbers, and I'm going to stand to kind of just point some things out. So these are our school years, 2015, 16, 17, 18, 19, and our projection. Now Center School right now for next year is looking at only five kids wanting to be signed up for the half-day program. And I remember last year when we, when Ross came and said to me early on, it was probably about the same time of year, said, "You know what? I don't have enough to make up a full class." And at that point in time, we said, "But we don't really believe in the hybrid model as such because we see a lot of flaws in that system." But we felt we didn't have anywhere else to go. And I remember saying to Ross at that point in time, "I'm willing to bet that you won't always be at this number 11. I'm willing to bet throughout the course of the year, you will see those numbers start to go down." And sure enough, what started at 11, I think now is down to about five or somewhere in that ballpark. So the point is, but even though you see this number right now, this may not be the number that ultimately we would end up with. Might we end up with more? We could, but our, our experience has shown us that this number generally tends to go down through the course of the school year. So Center right now for next year is looking at, looking at five students who want to sign up for full day or half-day as it stands right now. Florence Sawyer is at five. MRE is at 18. But we, we feel that that number might be different if it was free full daycare. So this just gives you a flavor of over the years, what's happened with these numbers. This is just a little bit, this is a little bit skewed, this number down here. But I would, I would strongly encourage you to look at those numbers. So one of the things that I, I was concerned about is I said, how many more children do you think we will have as an influx if we open this up for free full daycare? Because we're going to have all these families that say, "We, we want this now." So we took a look at the next sheet and I'll, I'll show you how to look at it. We took a look back to FY '08. And the trick to looking, I know that you can bring it up on your own binders here or laptops, is you're going to want to watch this number to this number. So you're going to want to show, what we wanted to do is we said, over the course of the years. Now this is the total for the district from '08. This is Center School. This is Mary Rolinson. And this is Florence Sawyer. So let's say we just take a look at the top part so that you can see where our thinking went. So in FY '08, there were 231 children in the kindergarten program. When those children moved to grade one, and if you think about it, grade one is really the litmus test for what you're going to have for the rest of your schooling, right? Grade one, because those kids are pretty much today, you have some shifts here and there, but that's pretty much your group to grade 12. So those are really the numbers that give you a flavor as a district, how many numbers of kids you're going to have in a class. So you see in '08, there was a differential of nine additional students. So those nine kids came from somewhere. They could have come from private schools, they could have come from moving in, they could have come from anywhere. When you break it down though, you start to see that, like Center School, it was only the difference of one child. Then they lost one. I mean, the numbers were just, so the notion that you might have a group of like 30 kids or a brand-new class that you didn't even expect to come in happen is remote. Now you're going to have some groupings like this, but we already have that in our system anyway. If you think about it, I mean, we had to have an extra teacher last year, you know? I think like next year in Sean, you know, Mary Rolinson, he's got one group that just, everybody that seems to move in goes into that class, you know? So you have groups like that always. That's part of our business. And so we have to expect that. So the whole notion that we're going to have 30 or 40 kids that we didn't anticipate coming in is really not going to happen. Because the trends show us that for the most part, it's generally under 10. In fact, sometimes even under five. Okay, should you go over to the next slide? So with that in mind, I thought, okay, so now we've kind of crossed that. Once we did a lot of discussion on that, we thought, hey, I'm not that concerned anymore about having a huge flux come in. So we can probably deal with the numbers that are going to come our way. So then we started taking a look at the cost in terms of the human resources, right? Because that's where you get the money back from the state as well for reimbursement. So we took a look at this and said, okay, kindergarten teacher salaries and such right now amounts to about this ballpark. Our IAs are about this. So right now, the program costs us about $1 million and 65.0, 1.065. Go to the next slide. Right now, the revolving account of that, that whole number there, our revolving account is what we take in from tuition. And you can see that the amount of money that we were taking in, and this is this year. And I wanted to do that so that we could stabilize and talk about this particular year if things were in play. Right now, we know that we will take in 400, approximately $494,000 in tuition. Clearly, it's not enough to really fully. Clearly, it's not enough to really fully subsidize the key program so that we can look at it and say, it's a sustainable program. It has never been a sustainable program. So I think, you know, as I said to Pat, we have to start looking at this through a different lens, because the truth is, you've always paid that loss. If you think about it, the school district has always paid for that loss. So maybe we need to start looking at it in, in terms of a lens of saying, well, wait a minute, that's already in the budget. Because that's worth being paid for, is the budgeted money. Your tuition has never been, has never charged enough to fully support the program.
So just to be clear, Brooke, when we see revolving fund money, so the, that's not tuition that we take in.
No, that is.
That is.
This is, this number is. This comes out of the regular appropriation.
So where is the money that we supplement? How much do we supplement?
That's it. That is the number.
Five seventy-one.
You said that's the regular appropriation. So that would be, in my mind, the regular appropriation for the regular kindergarten program, which is half-day. Is that correct?
No, this is all in, this is an all-in figure that we're talking about here right now.
Okay, well, that's where I'm confused, because I would think that there is the regular appropriation for half-day. There would be X amount of dollars that we take in for tuition full day, which we know doesn't cover the cost, and then what the district has to supplement to make whole.
Right. And this is the number that you have to supplement to make whole. This number here, this comes from tuition. This number here.
The tuition, the revolving fund includes the tuition we charge for half-day and full-day.
All I'm saying is that from, for understanding.
That's what we collect.
Excuse me, from my understanding, what we take in as tuition is X amount of dollars. And then what we need to supplement that to make it whole is another X amount of dollars. That's all I'm saying.
That's, no, you're right.
That would be a third, so it might be three, the regular amount for half-day K. The tuition that we take in, and then what we need to supplement it to have the money that we need for full-day K.
No, not really.
Okay, wait, then I'm misunderstanding that.
So, so let me just, let me just keep going here, and we'll see if this makes sense after. So bottom, what you need to know is, this is your tuition money that's coming in, this number here. So this, this number, whatever this number is, you will always pay out of the budget, budget of dollars. Like, that's what's gonna happen here. This money here is your tuition, right now, for this year. So, would you put it forward, please? This is the FY '19 scenario, so that's if, there's your 494, that same number. If this was already in play, if we already had free full day K in the Shova Regional School District, our reimbursement this year, and this comes from the D E S E, our reimbursement this year would be 512,000. So it's, for this year, it's actually more than we're bringing in from tuition, which if you think about it, makes sense, because we're not charging the amount it costs us to run kindergarten program. So we ran, we also took a look, just to let you know, um, just as an FYI, for if, if we were running this in 20, so not like, not right now, but now that the new cherry sheets have come out. So we called the D E S E the other day and said, well, can you run it to see if, you know, we're, we were doing all kinds of checks and balances and said, if we're thinking about this correctly, can you take a look at our numbers, what we're anticipating we would have, and tell us what our number would be if this was 20 rather than 19? And I wanna say it was 569,000 in change.
Yeah, 570.
So, so just to keep that in mind, so our thinking is, is spot-on with how we're viewing this number. Now, the problem with all of this is that first year, when you go to try to implement, which is why a lot of times people don't wanna even enter into this race, because you look and say, it's just too big a number, you know? How are we ever gonna come up with this? Because in the first year, you don't get your tuition money. So we wouldn't get, like, if it was this year, 494, nor would you get any reimbursement from the D E S E. So you're, you would be out between 5 and 600, for us right now, between 5 and 600,000 dollars in order to kickstart this. After that, in year two, you can see that it's basically gonna be a wash thereafter. But it's that first year when you don't have tuition coming in and you don't have reimbursement. Now, the Department of Education would look back, elementary and second education would say, well, you are gonna get reimbursement, it's just that it's one year behind, because all of our stuff is one year behind. It's based on your October 1st count, right? Except that there's no endpoint in life. So, you know, to the question, would we ever recoup that money? Well, you kinda do, but you kinda don't, because the truth is, you never get to an endpoint where you say, okay, now we're all done with this, and here's your 600,000 dollars back. So, um, in essence, if you go to the next slide, we know that that gap year is gonna take us between 5 and 600,000. The reason we, we set 5 to 600,000, to be honest with you, we think that it's probably gonna be closer to this. But if there's, because I'm, I'm projecting this over the next couple of years, we're not exactly sure what this is gonna look like. But the bottom line is, right now, we're gonna talk philosophically in a minute here as we, we speak with the principals. From, from a management perspective, we don't have in our, in any kitty right now, 600,000 dollars that we can write a check for and say, here, we can start it right now. That's, that's problematic for us, right? So as we started talking about it, um, Pat and I, you know, we were kind of determined to say, can we find a way here? What is this gonna look like? So we've had conversations back and forth with the auditor. We haven't really landed, um, where we wanna land, but we do think that we've identified some of these dollars, but it, but I can't do it on a dime. But I do believe that we can do it over the next couple of years. So when I take a look at it, and now you can understand, I mean, once you really start to understand this, why people or superintendents or school districts say, we can do this over maybe three or five-year period, right? Because it takes a while to get that seed money as such, to be able to do this to begin with. And, and not have it at the expense of other things, right? And so we're very cognizant to that. We're very cognizant to the needs of our high school right now, or things like when the, the oil tank goes and you, and you have to heat that building, and nobody else is out there to pay for it, that you've gotta, you know? All those other things that we look at, or curriculum and new instructional materials that we have to have for science or for, so, so we have to kind of keep all of that in perspective. So from my lens right now, what I'm, what I would like to put forward to the school committee for consideration for thinking, is that we don't do it, because we can't physically do it, and we don't have the money for 19, 20, nor would we do it for 20, 21. But that we have things in place for 21, 22, to start in that year of 21, 22. In essence, that gives me two years to gather the money earmark it. Um, of course, I would come to you with every bit of that first and see, we're looking at, in, with our auditors to see the vehicle that we can use, where we can save that money to earmark it. And then we would, as we would see fit to put monies into that line, we would run it past you first, until we get to that point. We, Pat and I feel that we can do this for that third year, but we feel it will take us the two years to get there. So with that, now I'm gonna turn it over to the principals and, and have you pick up from here.
Uh, well, thank you for your consideration for this proposal. Our lens is always focused on the needs of the students and not necessarily how to pay for it. So, um, I, you know, we have our, um, a very well-calibrated kindergarten team across the district, and I think, and Mr. Mulcarren says, far more eloquently than I will, that you know that when our kindergartners walk into our classrooms, regardless of the configuration or the, the financial logistics behind it, we are certain that they're going to receive a loving, nurturing environment and a high-quality, uh, early childhood education. So from a philosophical standpoint, I, I, we're calibrated and have been part of this process in thinking about, you know, what that would look like for us in terms of not only the, the, the long-term, which wouldn't look much different from an operational standpoint other than it would be, you know, a, a free, um, program, but sort of the transition into that. And, uh, and I, and I think that we're confident that we can make that work for all of our learners and our families. You know, if you wanted to add anything to that?
No, I think I would add just that, you know, we've talked about the half-day versus full-day before, and, you know, that's part of the educational philosophy, but also I think part of our educational philosophy is, is to meet the needs of our communities. We work in a great district, we work in great towns, and if the needs of the community are shifting and trending a certain way with regards to kindergarten enrollment, we need to think about what that looks like in the future. If this, it, within this proposal, I iterate what Principal Bates has said, that we intend to give every kid a great experience, and we're here to work with families, whether that child has learning needs, physical needs, or they're concerned about having a full-day experience versus a half-day. Um, you know, we have kids who come in who are, have not had preschool experience, we have kids who've come in who have a rich preschool experience. Every kid comes in at a different point, and we're expected, and I think we do a very good job of working with families and therefore working with students around whatever the needs may be. And, you know, if we shift in this direction, I have no doubt we're gonna continue to do that to, to respond to the needs of the, the, the trend of the community.
Thank you, Sean.
During my teaching career, I was in a school that had no half-day. So I didn't even consider an alternative until I went somewhere else, and I was like, what's this? And, uh, so, um, and, and over time, um, you know, I think the, the numbers and the conversations had, um, parents and the community have expressed an interest in the full-day. And I think this is a very, um, transparent plan that makes, sets, sets, sets out a plan on how to make that happen, and to, um, not just meet the needs of the students, the students, as they said, are gonna do remarkable in, in our programs, they do currently. But it also meets the needs of communities, of the communities and families that we're hearing. So, um, very much in support in, in line with, um, everything that's been said here.
And, and I think too, the other nice thing, uh, you know, when, when we meet as a collective group, we all come from that different lens, and that's what you're hearing, you know? Like, I, I think Principal Bates has, and I say, we don't always focus on the money. We, we're focused on, you know, what's right for children. And I think, you know, we're, we're always focused on children, except though Pat and I have to go in the back corner and say, okay, now how can we make this happen, you know? And what is that going to look like? And then we draw, you know, Anne Marie and say, Anne Marie, what happens if we decide to do some changes with staffing? Do we need to come and talk to you about this? What is that gonna look like? So all of those things, but I think where we've landed in coming here tonight, I think we all feel comfortable. But it is a paradigm shift. It would be if, if this is the route that we decide to take, collective we decide to take. It means that Neshova becomes that full-day, no option. And if somebody wants a half-day, then that's their choice, and we, we're very respectful of it, but it won't be at Neshova, it would have to be somewhere else. So that's a huge paradigm shift for our school district. Just as, instead of saying, this, this program loses all this money every year, we have to have the paradigm shift to say, we've paid for it every year. That's the bottom line here. And so it, to me, getting the challenges to get beyond that gap year, when you don't have money coming in, to me, that's, that's the big thing. But I do feel comfortable enough tonight to, to move this forward, or I guarantee I would not be here. I think the other thing, like all things we do, we have taken our time with this, we've had rich discussion, we've had feisty discussion at times as we've, as we've worked it through, but I feel very comfortable that it has been a very thoughtful process. With all of that said though, we understand that our job is to come back and make a recommendation, not tonight, but at some point in time, it will be the school committee's role to say yes or no. And so we're very respectful of that. So we just put that out there. So we're open to questions or thoughts?
Just a reminder to wait to be recognized, but at this point, if anyone has any questions or comments?
I'm wondering where the DESI money's coming from, because every time we talked about kindergarten grants, so this doesn't sound like a grant.
It's not, this is your chapter, that's a great question, thank you. This, this becomes, this rolls into chapter 70 money. So there's no more, there aren't any kindergarten grants right now.
Yeah.
Anyway. So we don't even have that bucket to go to, there, and there's probably never going to be any more kindergarten grants.
So how long is the DESI chapter 70 money gonna be available?
No, this is life. This is what fun, this is what funds all of our key 12, or grade one to 12 education right now. They become regular students, just like a grade 12 student.
But I'm confused, because chapter 70 money fluctuates based on economy, I guess. I don't really know what.
I don't think anybody really understands the chapter 74. Whoever the gentleman was that created it, I don't think beyond that, I don't think anybody understands it. But, but your point is right, it will always, it will always tweak and ebb and flow. You're absolutely right. But if you think about that, Lynn, in a different way, our costs always fluctuate anyway, because we have different contractual obligations, like all those other things that come into play, uh, whether it's like, you know, Steve had said earlier about turning on the lights or paying for the, the heat or the, you know, like, all of that changes every year. It's just that now, these students would be under our total umbrella, under the chapter 70 funding, funding. There are no more grants. Great, that's a great question. Thank you for bringing that up, because I, I should've spoken to that earlier. Other questions?
It looks like you have, I did fault. And wait, anyone else though?
Yeah, well, I was just gonna say that, um, this, the, the research is pretty clear on the benefits of full-day kindergarten, and I will get into that, but this issue isn't going away anytime soon, because the statistics are pretty clear, 96% of kindergarteners in Massachusetts attend full-day. Only 45 school districts charge for full-day kindergarten, that's 16%. And three years ago, in, in three years, 20 districts have shifted, and four are shifting every year. 11 states aim the district Columbia mandate full-day kindergarten, and there's actually a bill in the state senate that was introduced last week to mandate full-day K. So, I mean, we, we can talk about the philosophy, well, philosophy of giving people choices, but I feel like we're gonna be backed into a corner on this one, and so that we should take a proactive approach and figure this out on our own before the state goes, okay, you're doing that next year. And then we're like, ah, what do we do?
So I, I, I guess I'm a little confused. So how are you reacting to Brooke's, um, proposal about how we get to there? Do you not agree, or what?
No, I, I, I agree. And I, I understand that it probably can't happen overnight. I mean, it doesn't make sense for us to decrease tuition slowly over time, because you don't get that reimbursement until we go full-day, and if you go full-day, it's gotta be free. So I get that we probably just need some mechanism to save money, like you were talking about. You know, the details of that aren't known, so we can't really debate what those details are. But yeah.
I, I would also suggest, I mean, and I think that certainly when Lorraine and I talked about this, I don't think that we ever thought that this would be the singular meeting to have this discussion. I think I wanted to, like, from my lens, I think I wanted to lay it out and say, this is what we are thinking as a collective. If you could go home and think about it some more, maybe send some more questions, or if you've got concerns, and then we would come back and have some follow-up discussion to see. And again, if you send me back to the table and say, no, we don't agree with this at all, I, I don't, I can't think of a better approach, or something that will not bring harm to other programs than by taking it this way. And I think that's been one of the things that we've really had to work through, that it didn't mean cuts to other staff, or cuts to this, or cuts to that, and damage other really good things over here to be able to get to this, you know? So I think that we're, we're all comfortable as we sit here tonight, saying, this is what we feel is the best approach right now.
Mike.
Um, every time I visit this topic, and I've been kind of visiting it over, revisiting it over and over again, it always seems to come down to two considerations. So I guess I'd start by saying, I really appreciate how we've sort of addressed the budgetary considerations that need to be met, along with the developmental benefits. I really, like, because that's what it always seemed to come down to. And that's not an easy thing to bridge. And I, um, I also appreciate that this take is sort of a step in, uh, the direction of, of sort of a compromise. I, it's not an overnight thing, but... I, it's not an overnight thing, but it, it is, it will eventually get there. So, um, I wanted to start by saying that. And so my, my questions are, two of them related, that third year, are you projecting that we'll have accrued enough to completely offset by that third year?
In, in my mind, I, I think we will still be, I'm projecting that we'll probably still potentially be a bit short, but I think we can pick it up at that particular budget year. So I'm not concerned. So I don't, I'm not looking to say that I have in my mind, if, let's just say 600,000 for the sake of an easy, and these are just rounded numbers, I know that Lorraine always doesn't like rounded numbers, but for the sake of the discussion, we felt that that was the best way to deal with it. So let's say we have 500,000, which I believe we will have by that point in time, then we would build that last 100,000 into that year of implementation.
Okay, and then the second question will, um, once we are all in after that third year, does DESI fully reimburse the difference? Is that a full reimbursement?
No, you, it's just, again, it's a Chapter 70 formula, but that's what the numbers are going to look like when you go back, like, if, if that was happening this year, we would have received 512,000 dollars this year.
Right, right. Understood.
Yeah, so it funds, just as it would, Chapter 70 funds any other child in your school, your school system.
Right. But it's not as if they, they will only reimburse a limited percentage, it's, it's very close to a full.
Whatever they would give you for a percentage for a grade one student or a grade two student, they would give you for that case student.
Understood. Great.
Great question.
Other questions? Comments? Elise?
I just have a comment, um, because I, I really appreciate that you came forward with all this information, because obviously this has been a hot topic in all of our communities for a number of years. Um, and I think it's nice to be able, even though they're round numbers, to be able to say, this is what it will take and this is, is how we were, you know, sort of thinking about getting to implementation with this. So I really appreciate that. And, you know, because philosophically, I support and have always, you know, free full-day kindergarten, but never at the expense of having to say to somebody else, well, now your program gets cut, or we're not doing this other thing. So I really sort of appreciate the thought that you all have put into, here's how we can make it work without destroying something else.
Right, thank you. We've, I think we've worked really hard at that, so I feel really good, so thank you very much for that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, I remember last year when, when we brought this subject up and we agreed, it's something that has to happen. We weren't quite sure how we were going to do it, but we, we all agreed, I think, that this is something that has to happen. Um, the only thing I'm wondering is when we were talking about setting up like a bank account, and we're talking basically about putting 300,000 dollars a year into that bank account for the next two years, to give you that 600,000 dollars, that you're going to need to get yourself over that first year, until DESI reimburses you, but always a year behind, just like everything, just like everything else in the world. Um, I was, I was happy to hear that, that we would be doing away with the half-day kindergarten, because I think that there are probably some savings in doing that. You had a, you made an interesting statement to me while you, while you were looking at this at the beginning about busing.
Oh, you had a question about, yeah.
Yeah, would that, would that, would that be part of the contribution going forward, from year three forward? You wouldn't have to bus the half-day kids. And I don't know how much busing we do now with 20 kids or 30 kids in the, in the system anyway.
But you, but your thinking is spot-on, those are the types of areas that we're looking at. And the other thing I would say is, everything that we are looking at is how this ties in with, with early education, like the funds really need to be linked to early education for us to say, okay, that makes sense. And at every step, as we talk this through, we are reaching back out to the auditors, this is our thinking, are we on, on track with this? What's the best way? And like I say, you know, like, we've gone through tons of different ideas, but they haven't been something that can really gel, and, and so that's why I don't want to talk in details tonight, more broad overview, this is where we think that we're headed. Um, and just for clarification purposes, and you're right, I mean, in terms of if you just break 600,000 down into two years, it's 300,000 dollars a year, but that's not, that's not the lens that we're looking through, and it kind of goes back more to what I was saying to Mike earlier. I think that we can see our way to 500,000 for that, for that final year, and keep that last, out of that final year. And so with that, I think we feel very comfortable and, you know, as soon as we have our last details on that, so we'll bring that forward the next time we have this follow-up discussion on this.
Lynn?
So we've been talking about this long before you got here. So you've been reading a lot.
That I didn't know, actually.
Oh, we were. Um, so I'm a little disappointed that we'll take away choice, which is, which is fine, but in all of my reading, what I found was, and what was really well documented, is whether they go to kindergarten or they don't, it's really noticeable in the first year, but the second year, there is no, you can't tell who went to kindergarten and who didn't. So, and that's well documented. But when I was, I was reading stuff and it was really kind of, um, it did make, you know, you read it, but we read all the emails that come in, and somebody actually wrote an email that said, 1999 is when they said full-day kindergarten. And if you can ask DESI maybe, but if you look at when anxiety started, really kicking in, you know, because when you read right now about Europe, Europe waits and they, instead of saying an age you go in, you get tested. And so you might not start kindergarten until you're seven, because you're just not ready. So they've, they've got a whole different paradigm. I'm not saying we should go to Europe, but has anybody actually looked at the correlation between this uptake in anxiety? Because these are the kids that will be going, you know, these are the kids that went into full-day kindergarten. Is there a correlation? Has anyone looked at that? Because we can't go backwards.
Yeah.
You know, so if we're causing the problem, I don't want to.
Yeah, I, I think that there's a lot of data out there, and some of what you're saying, I think we've also had some of that very conversation around our table as well, so I would want you to know that this has come up around the table. Um, I don't think, I wouldn't sit here tonight and tell you that I have answers though, because...
Is, is DESI looking into it at all? Is that something that they would do?
Well, I think they would look at, they would look at it through the broader, this is going with my ex-DESI hat on, I, I would say that they would probably look at it through the broader lens of SEL globally within, so I think that, that's where that would fall, rather than, you know, EEC looking at it specifically.
So who's in charge of SEL?
There's, there are units there that, that have, that have focus on it.
Units of DESI?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, the, the gentleman that, um, that was in charge of the one just retired, so I don't know who's replaced him. And I don't know if they've had a shift out there, but that's, that's exactly who, um, who would have looked at it for, John Bynum, that was his name.
Just a question for the building investors. I know that, um, in a classroom, there's sort of a population limit, um, for any class, for kindergarten, I don't know what number it is, is it somewhere, there isn't any set number, um, and I think, you know, one of yours possible in terms of, you know, what that looks like for the dynamics of the classroom and enrollments, being what they are, the dynamics in any class, even with the same enrollment, could be very, very different. So I, I appreciate the fact that we've never actually set specific limits in terms of what those class sizes might be like.
Yeah, so that might answer my question then. I guess my question was, would we be getting ourselves into some trouble if coinc, just coincidentally on, on that third year, or, or even previous to it, we had three or four classes where we had to spill over into an extra class, requiring a new classroom teacher and new IAs, and that offered the cost?
Yeah, so I would...
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah, please take it.
So just, um, I, I think, you know, you look at the projected, uh, numbers, and for me and for my thinking, I, it's, it's the lowest number that Florence Sawyer School has had in, and granted, projected enrollments in January are not necessarily enrollments in September, but, um, it, to me, it's, it shifted my thinking in terms of, you know, what the community's actually looking for and wanting, and, um, and I think, you know, where we would be in this transition phase is looking at phasing out the half-day kindergartens anyway. So I don't, I wouldn't project that, given those numbers and where we are now, that all of a sudden there would be that leap.
I would just add on to that, I think we're also very cautious about looking at enrollment numbers well early on in this school year to think about what positions we need for next year. And I think we have a pretty good relationship, and I, I don't want to speak for, for the superintendent, but we have a relationship with the district between the towns to know what might be coming up for housing developments or other construction projects that will keep us on our toes, to be able to react and think about, okay, what might that look like within our buildings, what can we project if that does happen? So there's always that risk in any grade level, that we're going to get an influx of students over the summer, and that's worst-case scenario. I think with my experience in this district is that we're pretty well thought out in planning for that and adding the section, or even sometimes decreasing the section, ahead of the end of the spring, the school year before, so that we're not doing something where it's whites of their eyes, end of August, let's write some, some emails and letters to parents to say, hey, guess what, we got a completely, you know, rearranged class list, we have to add a section to what it would be, for the very purpose that we don't want to disrupt the, the, the experience of, of students.
And, and the numbers that we have in terms of those projections, they're pretty reflective of the, um, of the census information, so I, I don't, I don't think we're missing anyone.
I have a question. So right now, looking at these numbers, it looks like we're still headed towards the hybrid model for the foreseeable future?
It's, it's hard to say, because, you know, quite frankly, again, if we were to just follow like Ross's example of that 11, and I don't want to speak for the principals, but, you know, 11 down to five, that five could be down to zero before we even start the school year, and there might not be any need for any hybrid, you know? And right now, we have to watch Sean's numbers, so that 18, if it goes up, then that's, yeah, oh, actually, it's 19 as of yesterday, right? So it, it, it's just, it's our jobs, I think that that's kind of what Ross is saying, I mean, our job is to go with the flow and watch this as it's going on. I, as I sit here tonight, I couldn't tell you if we have to, if we're going to have to use a hybrid model or not. We may not, it just depends, it depends between now and when happens.
And just as a reminder, um, center's the only kindergarten carrying the hybrid model currently for this school year, so the other buildings have a standalone half-day classroom, so that's, you know, that's part of our discussion for enrollment and positions for the next school year, so, I don't know, we continue to update Brooke on that information.
Okay. Yeah, well, because when I was, one of the things I was thinking about is parity across the district, if different schools are carrying different models, and if those models change from, from year to year, full-day kindergarten would sort of smooth that out, um, because there was a lot, there was a lot of debate about the hybrid model, and it sort of presses it down.
Yeah.
And if anything, makes it more difficult for the students.
We don't necessarily support, I think, I'll speak for myself, I don't necessarily support the hybrid model. I think we've had lots of discussion on that. I see the rationale for it from a management perspective, from a leadership perspective, not as much.
All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments? So what do you see as next steps for...
I would like to, uh, put, put this on as another topic. Um, I don't know if we necessarily should fit it into the month of February, quite frankly, because we've still got like a lot of budget stuff that I need to get done between now and the end. But maybe if we're seeing in March, or the last meeting in February, something like that, come back and do a revisit. I think Joan at that point in time will also come forward with her, her thinking too, just so that you know, um, because she wasn't able to come tonight, but just to have that opportunity to speak.
What we need, what we need, what we need to deal with is...
Excuse me, excuse me.
Excuse me.
Steve.
What we need, what we need to, uh, look at this for this school year, 19, uh, from a budgetary point of view as well. So it has to be before we finish the budget.
Definitely we can do that, if, if you want, if you, if you're willing to say yes to go for this, then I'll probably, that'll trigger me to do something, you're right.
So just to be clear, are you talking implications for, we're doing FY '20 right now.
And this, this would have implications?
So this would have implications for FY '20?
Yes, it could.
Okay.
Depending on how you see it.
Okay.
Lynn?
But the bottom line is, it's paid kindergarten this year.
I, yeah, you're right.
Just so parents can...
Paid kindergarten for school year 1920.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah, I can't possibly do it for the next school year.
Okay. Um, all right, so we're going to set another agenda item for further discussion, last meeting in February, or probably in March after the budget is input, just one second. Um, Joan will be here to give her input, um, they're going to look at the implications for, um, FY '20. You spoke about looking at, um, building seed money over the next two years, so that would, I, involve some sort of a recommendation from your office. And so what are your thoughts about when we would see that?
I think we could, I think, Pat, I, I don't want to speak for you, but I think we should be ready probably the next time that we come forward with this. We will have all of our, have all of our questions answered by the auditor by that point in time.
So when we have it on the next agenda item, in addition to having Joan present, you and Pat will throw out some ideas about that.
Okay, I'd love to tonight, but I feel like it's just too, a little too premature.
Yeah, yeah. Lynn?
Oh, just an administrative detail, full-day kindergarten is listed as an agenda item on the February 13th meeting, um, for the calendar.
We could change that easily.
I know, I just wanted to...
We do that at the end of the meeting.
If you want to change it.
Yeah, okay, all right. Um, so, okay, so, uh, on a future agenda item, most likely in March, um, we'll hear from Joan DeAngelis about her thoughts related to sped. Um, we will look at the...
I think, I think what I'm hearing is February.
Oh, okay.
It has to be in February.
Okay, no, no, I'm, that's, yeah, thank you, okay. So February, um, we'll hear from Joan, we'll look at implications for FY '20, and then at that February meeting, we will get some budget ideas from, um, Brooke. Um, okay, is there anything else we would want to have as part of that conversation in February? Questions answered?
Thank you for the rich discussion tonight and the questions, I really, really appreciate that, thank you. And to the principals, thank you so much for all of our meetings and everything else. Pat and Marie, thank you so much.
Thanks for breaking it down, so I know I can be a little obtuse when I see no words. Um, sorry, it's my learning disability. Um, but no, I, I think the way you rolled it out and explanation with the, the looking at enrollment was very helpful, and then, um, having the future conversation. I think philosophically, and Steve is right, I think we went around the table last year, and we're all philosophically in agreement that this is something that we would, um, like to see, and there were questions, and it's premature at this point to talk about programming, which would include social emotional learning as well as other curriculum items. But I, I think, um, the plan that you've laid out has a lot of promise and, um, look forward to continuing the conversation. So thank you for your work.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, next item, employee insur, wait a minute, is that it? Employee insurance date. Pat, how you doing?
Good.
So, as many of you know, when I was bid for health insurance this year, so today was the deadline for the submission, and I can tell you who has submitted, but, um, at this point, we literally, just before the meeting here tonight, we got all of our submissions in, so we haven't really had any time to look at them and boil down, you know, exactly what we're going to do or how we're going to move forward. And then we also have to meet with the insurance advisory committee and have some really rich discussions. So, um, we had got responses from Tufts, Maya, who is our current carrier, Harvard Community Health, and Blue Cross directly. Um, just so you know, so that there isn't any confusion, we go through Maya and they brokered our Blue Cross coverage, because they work as like a group for better rates.
So you have Maya and then also Blue Cross.
Right, two separate. So as soon as we boil that down, take a look at the rates, and, um, hopefully we'll have an update for the budget as well. So that's my update.
I think the other thing, we want to thank the, the group that met, that has been meeting consistently with regards to insurance. I think Kevin, is, you've got some representation on that committee as well, right?
Right.
For the insurance group.
Right, and, and it's, um, last year we met, this year we're meeting again, we have a meeting in the fall, and we're going to continue to meet through this process.
And we also resourced some outside help to help us to make sure that we didn't miss anything when we did... anything when we did the RFP. So that, you know, when that went out, we made sure that we called in one or two folks that are local, that we know their stuff really well. So we want to say shout out to them. Thank you so much for helping us through this process because it was an extensive process. So, I mean, it's fine that we can sit here tonight and say, yes, they're all in today, but it took us a long time to get to this point today. So it's exciting to see this come to this point. So now we've got all of this and we can start to take a look, do the comparisons, do the analysis, do the digestion of everything. So hats off to the whole group for getting us to this point tonight. So thank you, Pat.
So at the February 13th meeting, we will have the data that you've collected?
I would say so.
And when do we expect, and it would be the Insurance Advisory Committee that makes the recommendation?
Yes.
To this committee? So can you just walk us through the steps, like what role does the school committee play, if any, or how does this all work? And what's the timeline?
Well, there's a contractual obligation for this committee to meet and discuss any changes to the insurance.
Which committee?
The Insurance Advisor Committee.
That's right. So we want to make sure that there's no confusion there.
Not with, not with the school committee.
So it's not the school committee that makes the decision? The Insurance Advisory Committee will look at the data and make a decision?
That's their task to do.
That's, all right, I just want to make it clear.
That's why they meet.
And will they have met prior to the February 13th meeting?
That, I have to work out some dates with meeting.
Okay.
So I think that's going to be pushing it too much.
Well, this coincides with the budget. I guess I'm just curious with regard to when we'll have the information because that will go into the...
Right, actually, I just today got some dates together that I have to forward to Kevin and see if we can get everybody in the group together so we can meet. I would like to meet before school vacation. You know, I have to, at least two meetings.
Okay, but we will have a recommend, we will have the decision of the committee before we vote on the final budget.
Yes, absolutely, that's true. By the time of the final budget, you know.
Any questions for Pat? Oh, Mike, go ahead.
Two questions. Who's our, who is the current provider, current insurance provider?
It's, Blue Cross Blue Shield is our provider of insurance, but we are a member of the Maya group, which basically Maya creates a group of insurance, people that participate, like different communities will get their insurance through Maya, and they create like a group to get a better rate.
So with changing, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but with a changing provider, that could mean, that could mean significant differences in cost to...
It may or may not.
Yeah, it might or it might not. Which is one, one of the reasons why the committee is tasked for looking at those types of details.
So, okay, and that was my, that was my last question. The Insurance Advisory Committee, do they play a role in planning on how this gets rolled out, disseminated, publicized, sort of?
Any changes that we would make to the insurance, whether we change provider or whether we change any aspects of the plan? We would go before the Insurance Advisory Committee and discuss that.
So let's just assume that it does, I mean, there is a change, it gets passed. I guess I'm just trying to be thoughtful about how we let the employees of the district know that these changes are...
Oh, that would be, that would be a whole separate, that would be a whole separate process. I mean, that would be, he can say yes, yeah, that would be an entirely separate process. This is still at like an infancy stage where we're, and again...
Because that's a big, that's a big step.
It is. It's enormous.
Okay, all right, but as long as we understand.
And the advisory committee is just not one or two people. That's a group that sits around this table, you know, so you've got different stakeholders that are, that are there.
Can you just, for everyone's understanding, who, just the positions of those who sit on the committee?
It's myself.
Yep.
Anne Marie.
Yep.
Kevin.
Okay. So, but Kevin's the president of the Teachers Association.
Right, and then a couple of teachers, two custodians.
So members of Unit A and Unit C.
Unit C, yeah, Unit A and Unit C.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions for Pat? Have you had a question?
Just quickly, just so you know how this started, I mean, this whole thing came about because of the Cadillac tax. It's going to really dig into the, so, yes.
Well, I don't know that the Cadillac tax even exists anymore. I'm pretty sure it took it away.
I believe they did.
I believe that they did take it away.
Elaine, you have a question?
No.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Pat. We look forward to hearing about the work of the committee. Thank you. Wait, are you next?
I'm next. She's staying. I'd like to do a line right there. So I have the treasurer's report for the month of December. As you can see, our total bank balance is over $10 million, and that's inclusive of our OPEB.
Let's say again, Pat, inclusive of...
It's inclusive of our OPEB. I don't think that we had an OPEB number on the...
No, I think, she's just going to bring it up so we can put it up there. And I think that we did that as a result of some of the questions that were asked around Saturday. And it was like, well, how much do we have in here? And we said, well, incidentally, coincidentally, we're going to actually put it up there. And so you'll see that it's right here.
And what's the line to look at?
We, really, Steve, we don't want to go there. $42 million? I don't know what it is right now. It's in the 40 millions.
Does anybody have any questions about the treasurer's report?
Lynn.
Well, since you put OPEB in, shouldn't we have the account, the sustainability account for the trip bill? Because that'd be a big account too, right?
It's in, that's, that would be, no, that's not this is.
But it's in our general fund.
Also a separate account?
No.
Wouldn't, sustain, wouldn't that be...
It is a separate account, but it's inside of this.
Yeah, see, it's listed by bank.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. See? So it's in one of those?
Yeah. Any other questions for Pat? Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
All right, I think we're ready to get the beginning of the year parental handouts.
So this is actually in response to an earlier request I think Lynn had brought up in terms of the forms that come home at the beginning of the year for all of our kiddos across the district in a variety of our different schools. And so what we did was, Teaching Learning Department was kind of do a deep dive in terms of what we're currently doing, what's, how we're streamlining forms, how we're getting forms home with kids, how they're being signed, in concert with the new website, the work we do on Power School, Student Handbook Society School, and then taking a look in terms of moving forward, in terms of how we want to handle the forms that go home. So what we did was first take a look at, if you go to the next slide, kind of the past year in review. A year ago now, what we did was put, kindergarten registration was available online through Power School. Kathy Leonardi handles all of that. She's kind of our Power School whiz. So all of the kindergarten registration was available online. And then we had the preparation of the 2018, 2019 school handbooks and student handbooks and forms that required signature for all schools. So that was kind of the preparation in terms of starting to get these things on Power School. And you'll see on the next slide that what we did was create a grid for you to determine what forms are actually on, on Power School, how they're being handled, basically a current inventory, and that's going to inform us moving forward. So this presentation is kind of like a, in real time, what's happening, and then taking a look at next year for the fall, really kind of where we want to be. And it's certainly an opportunity to get feedback from you folks as well. We've gotten feedback from each of our schools as well as parents on, you know, what would be most helpful in terms of streamlining all of those forms that do go home or all of those forms that have to be downloaded. And so we have some, some recommendations from there. If you can go just back one, sorry. So this past fall, what we did was we, we took kind of like a sample from the high school in Burbank Middle School, Center School, Florence Sawyer, made available paper format if there were requests. So things were online, the handbooks were online through Power School, and if people wanted paper copies and asked for them, they would get them. Haley and Mary Rollinson, continuing with both paper format and an online format, they were doing both. So in moving forward, we're looking at what kind of consistency do we want? The note here is that we and Nishova will always have forms and information available in paper format as needed or as requested at any school. So those paper formats are always available if they're asked for.
So when you get the paper from somebody, does somebody input it so you have it?
Yeah, they would come back to that main office and they would be input that way. Yeah, absolutely. Great question. So the next slide is kind of a dive on, so what we did was we took a look at, you know, you've got all your schools here, and what we took a look at was all the forms that really are going home, okay, across the district. So this top grid here are forms on Power School registration. The bottom grid is the forms that are available for downloading online. Now, we just did redo the website, so it's clearer, it's more streamlined. We feel confident in putting forms online moving forward for this particular fall at each school that can be downloaded if need be, as well as taking a look at what forms really should be available in Power School. It can be signed off. And even taking a look at, are there forms that can be all put together in a handbook that can require, say, one signature by parents through Power School that are located in that handbook once they've read all of them? So that's a work in progress because we feel like we need some more feedback on that from a variety of constituencies I think that exist. But just to outline those forms, we've got the school handbook. This is our acceptable use policy, AUP, for online. These are Chromebook guidelines, so you can see it's elementary school, that's not applicable because we don't have individual Chromebooks for those. But in terms of our other schools and our high school, that's also in Power School. Use of online resource form that we have, the schools that are offering it in Power School. So you can see there's a little bit of differentiation there. Whether or not students can be photographed, we ask that, you know, for Twitter and those kinds of things and any periodicals or media that we put out, that's been located in Power School. PTO for parents, our medical forms, we have a science agreement that again is hit or miss. And then we have our national lunch program, which is required by all. So this is what we're kind of, this is the current data that we have. And so the conversation is looking now like, should these forms that we see commonalities with go into the handbook that is already located on Power School? So that when parents go into Power School, they create their account, the handbook for their particular child, their particular school is there, and all of these forms are located in that handbook. So that it's, it's kind of one-stop shopping at the beginning of the year. But we also recognize that with the new website, would it also be helpful to make sure that these forms are available online for downloading as well? So that, this is where we currently stand. So this is the current data that we have, and we want to inform the best decision in terms of streamlining those forms and moving forward for the fall. As it's, you know, only January now, we wanted to take a look at, because you, Lynn, brought up in the beginning of the year, that, you know, your, your child was bringing home forms, but yet there was some in Power School and they were, they were kind of all over the place a little bit. So just like with the website, we want to streamline this as well. So the next slide will just kind of outline how we want to move forward and what the objective is there. And it really is to align the format and the dissemination, the handing out of documents and forms for new and returning parents and guardians of students across all schools that's pretty consistent. So we want streamlined use of Power School registration for forms that require signature in each student handbook, all forms and information that are downloadable from school websites, and then having forms and information available in paper copy when requested in each of our schools' main offices. So that's kind of looking forward, but it's also an opportunity to seek feedback from people because we have between now, obviously, and the summertime to get those things in order.
Questions for...
Yeah.
So when you go into your handbook, if you're going to put all of the forms in the handbook, so when you go in, are you as a parent going to see your own handbook? Is everyone's going to have an individual handbook?
Well, everyone has an individual account. So within that account, the handbook and those forms would be available. So within that account, you have those documents that you sign off on. So within your account, it would show up as, yes, parent has read, signed, understands.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mike?
Some of those documents, to make them electronic would be just as simple as making them into a PDF.
Correct.
So why, why wouldn't we make them, why would they already be available online electronically?
Yeah, I mean, it's a great question. I think that we're, we're moving there and getting there. There's just been inconsistency in what, what certain schools have been doing in the past and are currently moving towards. And so I think now, because we've had a focus on the digital piece and the new website, it's going to be a lot easier to do that. And Kathy is really in tune to the Power School piece, myself and Cindy Larson and Coordinators of Digital Learning. So I think it is going to be easy to streamline that, but it's also determining which specific forms do we want in there that, that remains consistent across the district and what forms should be more tied to a specific school's webpage.
Other questions or comments? So is there a, are people given a deadline as to when things should be signed or returned? And what happens when they don't get returned?
Good question. There, there is, and they get a Power School reminder, they'll get a Power School reminder from Kathy that, that it needs to be signed. And we dealt with this with the principals this year, and we generated a list of kids who had not signed the acceptable use policy. And then each of our building principals reached out to each one of those families to make sure that they did sign them.
So Power School can send something out and then there's a follow-up? It's, the onus is on the principal then?
We have, we have the principals, we met as a group, make sure that they then reached out, particularly around the Chromebook guidelines piece and the acceptable use policy because they couldn't be taking those Chromebooks home without...
But truthfully, at the end of it, it wasn't that many.
It wasn't that many at all.
I was shocked.
It might have been nine or 10 kids.
I thought it might be 100 or 150.
It was very, very minimal.
That's right. Okay. Very good. Okay, so we are at the MSBA.
Yes, the SOI update.
SOI update, Brooke.
Yeah, thank you. So Alita's got a sheet that she's going to hand out, and here, this is going to seem a little clunky, but just bear with me here because in a perfect world, what I'd be looking for at the end of this is unless you've got some major changes that you're going to send me back for, I would love to be able to take a vote tonight, get it approved, and let me resubmit. So the software that, that MSBA uses is really difficult. And so, Alita's smiling. Yes, it, it has been a real challenge for us. And for me to just go in and, for example, just track changes, yes, we can't do that. It's just, so I thought, what's the fastest way that I can get through this? So that's, hence you have a cheat sheet that's going to go along. And if you've got the, we posted the SOI, so you should be able to go into your Chromebooks and find it, because I'm going to go quickly from page to page through here and just show you some of the changes that I'm going to make. Because there are not many. Now, you'll recall that I had mentioned to you before that MSBA had said, you know, pretty much just go in, change the date, change the signatures, and resubmit, because it was a strong SOI. So I'm not going to put a lot of changes to suggest a lot of changes to you tonight, as some of them are as simple as new date or signature or change the tense or, so I'm going to go through it really quickly with you and just show you what I've done. So if you're following online with the actual SOI, that's probably your best way of taking a look at this. So on pages three and four, there are some new dates that need to be put in there. You can see on three underneath the signatures, the signatures will have to change, of course, and then on page four, I just have to change the date there too. So that's a, that's an easy one. On page six, just some housekeeping there. I have to put in FY '20 and the next sentence, the two sentences will be just deleted. So that's because it's not applicable at this point, at this point in time. Over the page to page seven, under site description, are you following, are you able to follow along with me here? I want to make sure that I'm getting everybody saying yes. Great, thank you. Under site description, some tense changes need to be added. Go under site to the, the second paragraph, for example. The FY '19 budget had $50,000 allocated for the engineering component. Then I wanted to add a section there. We continue to work closely with DEP regarding this work and timelines. We continue to work closely with DEP regarding this work and timelines. I add the following. The hydrogeologic evaluation report is now being submitted to and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for the future application of the groundwater discharge permit. The engineering firm continues to work on new, the new systems design and putting bid specifications together. We anticipate going out to bid in early spring to begin work on this project. So it's just because that's the next step, that's where we are, we're at right now, so it's just updating it, that's all it is. Over, sorry, I was going to say over the page, I know that's okay. If we could please turn the page to...
I never heard of over the page.
I know, I'm so sorry, try it.
I think it's cool.
No, it's not. So on page nine, page nine, under the mechanical and electrical system, just underneath the first paragraph there, I want to add the following. During this school year, the 2018-19, we lost the use of the 12,000 gallon heating fuel tank. It supplies heating fuel to the boiler plant, which heats the entire building. This has been an incredible challenge to navigate. We currently have a 5,000 gallon temporary tank, which we are temporarily using to supply the fuel to the building. This is not a sustainable practice. We're having regular oil drops every five days to keep our oil at a level necessary to heat the building with no disruption. We've been working extensively with multiple vendors to arrive at the best solution for the building moving forward. The initial quote for completion of this work was $250,000. So that's just because that's where we sit today. That doesn't mean that it's going to be like this in a month or two, but as I write this, that's where we're at. Turning to page 12, just a one-word change, and that's, if you look at your educational spaces, count down the paragraphs, one, two, three, four, five, six. The library continues to be carved to create new classroom spaces last December. So we're just going to add the word "last" because that's when we did it. Page 13, again, there are just some minor edits that I'm going to make down under the maintenance and capital repair. It's, again, tense changes. So if you go down under capital, maintenance, and capital repair, one, two, three, four, five. The district has focused on the implementation of regular maintenance plans in all schools across the district. Proactive and preventive maintenance processes are regularly considered. So these, these are really small words, really, to make sure that it's current with what's happening right now. And I just did a, a small change in the last paragraph. If you look up to the second and last line, where it starts, building components are reaching, I'm just changing that a little bit to say their end-of-life expectancy. It's just more grammatically correct. On page 14, a little bit of change here on the, underneath the leach field, and again, it's just to bring it current. So on the leach field, if you go down to the first, second, third, fourth line, this current budget allocated $50,000 for ongoing necessary engineering work. And then delete the rest of the sentence. And then underneath that, I want to take the exact same section, and you'll recall last year I said, there are some areas where we literally need to cut and paste the exact same thing, and I want to cut and paste that section on the leach field that I've already read to you and put it under there. And then I will take the, do the exact same thing with the section, with the fuel tank, and put it under the heating ventilation. So I'll just add those two sections into that, that little piece there. Steve?
Since we're making word corrections...
Yeah, please do. Yeah, tell me where.
I need to spell leach from leaching field. You've got to spell one way in the SOI, and one here.
I'll do a quick check to make sure that we've got the correct spelling. Thank you for catching that, I appreciate that. So that's page 14.
Leach.
Yeah, we'll do a check, then we'll go back and make sure that we do it consistently right through. Thank you. Page 16, nothing on page 15, but onto page 16, there's just a, a short little section there that I want to add under because you'll recall that we had a full property condition assessment completed district-wide. And so that is now just coming into our offices. In fact, I think the last one is in now. And so I would like to add the following paragraph, which basically says, the district engaged Hoken and Associates during the last school year to complete a general assessment of all buildings within the Neshova Regional School District. These assessments have now been finished and disseminated to our central office staff who are reviewing, digesting, and analyzing the contents. These documents will help us to establish district facilities' goals and priorities as we move ahead into the next several years for the purpose of strategically and fiscally planning. The documents are now on file in the business office. And then if they want to see some, of course, we'll pass it along to them. On page 17, I would want to update the bottom section. There's some minor changes there at the hot water tank at the bottom of the page. So, because we actually ended up doing, putting, installing a propane, high-efficiency water heater with three tanks. So I would just make those changes, those minor changes to that, to make sure it reflects, is reflective of what the actual process was.
Under the heating fuel tank replacement, update the number.
Oh, thank you. Where, where did you catch that, Steve? Yes, thank you very much.
Saying $100,000.
I will make sure that we do that. Yeah, I, I will make sure that I do that. Thank you very much, yeah. Page 18, I would add at the, the bottom of the page, just this last sentence, the current situation involving the oil tank is NRSD's highest facilities priority during these winter and spring months. Without heat, we cannot open the building. On page 19, just really small, under priority five, go down to the second paragraph, and again, I'll catch that leach field throughout. Steve, thank you for bringing that up. I would put the leach field and oil tank situations must be addressed for obvious reasons. Without them, we cannot operate NRHS. And then finally, I think, page 23 is the last one. And I would just add this underneath at the bottom of priority seven. A temporary solution is in place to currently support the heating fuel being fed to the plant while a more permanent situation is sought. And those are the changes that I would recommend. If you're comfortable with those changes, I would, would ask that you take a vote so that I can make those changes and resubmit.
Any questions before Lynn reads the motion? Ready? The first one.
All right, motion. The school committee authorizes the administration to submit the completed SOI to the Neshova Regional High School to MSBA. Further authorizing the school committee chair and superintendent to sign the certifications which verify the vote was taken.
Can I have a second? Oh, yeah. You've got to do them separately. Elaine seconded. Any discussion? On favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So when you put this in?
I would, I can submit it anytime now.
So do we have to say as, as amended?
Actually, that's probably a good idea. Thank you for adding that, yes.
If you read it and do as amended, thank you.
Thank you for adding that, yeah.
The school committee authorizes the administration to submit the completed SOI for the NRHS to MSBA. Further authorizing the school committee chair and superintendent to sign the certifications which verify the vote was taken. As amended.
Right. Second, Elaine?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. And then there is a second motion that Lynn will read.
It's not a motion, it's just a resolution.
We have to, we don't have to vote on it? Do you have to read it?
Yeah, the next piece, yes.
It's a resolution, though, it's not a vote.
No, you're right, but you're, actually, you're right, but we do need to read that because that is at part of the whole MSBA process. Thank you.
Okay, result. Having convened in an open meeting on January 30, 2019, prior to the closing date, the Neshova Regional School District of Bolton, Lancaster, and Stowe, Mass., in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and accordance and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, the statement of interest SOI dated January 30, 2019, to the Neshova Regional High School located at 12 Green Road, Bolton, Mass., 01740, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories, all which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority five. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems, such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems, to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in the school facility. Much of the building experiences sections that are beyond life expectancy standards and are in need of full replacement. Priority seven. Replacement of or addition to obso... Do I read this out loud?
Yeah, you can go, keep going.
Replacement of or in addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements for the same rationale as provided in priority five. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this SOI statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The end.
Thank you.
And that has, that has to be submitted in the minutes.
Yeah.
We don't have to vote on that.
No, no, we don't have to vote on that. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. So we're moving on to old business, and it is the budget workshop follow-up. So I think Brooke has some information to provide, and then we can open it up to questions and comments.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Pat to come back to the table with us. So, again, I said this at the beginning, and so I just want to reiterate again that the whole point of the Saturday workshop is to lay out all of the asks. Our task, you know, as an administrative team, is to go back now and refine those asks. And we do a lot, a lot of work. We do a lot of soul-searching during this, like, month as we look so deep in, in the work that we're doing. We make sure that things tie together for curriculum instruction. We make sure that appropriate PD is where it should be, that it aligns with our goals, that it aligns with the district improvement plan, that it aligns with our school improvement plan. So there's a lot of tying in of all of that kind of, that kind of stuff. So at the end of the day, we come back and we say, okay, so where do we stand? And so tonight, what we do is we're coming back to show a, a change. I think Alita's going to put it up for you to, to say, here's where we stand right now. I sent you quite a lengthy email the other day and said, this is kind of where we're at right now. And that was before we, we did, did this. Now, so I'm going to start at the bottom, actually, here. You'll recall that you asked us to put some additional money into those two lines, and so I want to show that right off the bat that we did that. So we've got, we've got a full amount now of $100,000 that we would commit at this moment in time. Remember, this is going to change again, not this line, but this number is going to change again by the 13th. So right now, we've got it increased to $100,000. And there was also the suggestion, and it was a good suggestion, of, of putting those legal services to the 20, an additional $25,000 to make sure that we had $100,000 in that line as well. So those were, those were our only two adds. I just want to speak about the facilities in the leaching field right now, and I know that I had said this on Saturday, but I really do wonder, I think, and I'm not suggesting we have this discussion now, I'm not suggesting that at all because I think it calls for a bit richer discussion. Of that $445,000, what we know for sure is that $250,000 of that is for the leach field. And there's nothing we can do to, to get away from the fact that we've got to deal with that, that leaching field. So we know that. What's still a little uncertain for us is that remaining balance for the oil tank. Rob is still looking at this. You'll recall that we got the first, first quote in that said $250,000. Maybe that's where it's going to land, but we still don't know. We're still in process with that. But there is a part of me that says, should these two things be pulled out of the, so that's why we've pulled them out of the budget for right now, and say, do we consider taking a short-term loan for those two projects? Because they're very specific. The oil tank and the leach field. And so I feel comfortable in doing that. The school district has done this kind of thing before, and I think that, I think it's something for us to consider, but I'm not looking for that conversation right now. So we pulled that out. We went back after the facility scheduled maintenance and asked Rob to go back and have a, a further look, as you kind of also indicated that day, but we all know that he has, he had to go back and take another look. So right now, as it sits right now, we've pulled another $188,100 out of his budget. Maybe you might want to speak to Todd and the technology and hardware because you worked with Chi on that, and we don't need a lot of detail, but just a broad overview.
Sure. So in, in completing the budget, you know, Chi and I, as well as with Pat, you know, Chi, we looked at several components, particularly the hardware that we purchased for the district. You know, that's anywhere from Chromebooks to, you know, things that we have in our hands, those kinds of things, and we were able to take almost $150,000 off of that line in terms of looking what our, what our needs are, and as well as feedback from you folks on Saturday during, during our discussion.
So I'll, I'll turn to Pat to ask if she could just touch base on the E-rate and the Title I grant offsets, because Title I grant offsets we just learned of the other day, so.
Right. So as far as the E-rate funding goes, we went back and we took a look at it. We expected a reduction in it, but apparently not as deep as I had thought. So what we'll have is an additional $80,000 this year because what we get is 50% of the internet connection costs. And this is year one of a new contract that we started with Comcast. So that's why, if you look at that line, it's actually lower. It's because this is year one of that contract in which Comcast is charging us less money for that. So it's, it's getting a little bit more competitive out there, so the prices are coming down.
The Title I grants?
And the Title I grants, we took a conservative view initially, looking at our numbers for, that affect our Title I funding. We determined that we will have an additional, almost $70,000 in salary offsets for next year. So we're pretty confident that we'll get that in, in discussion with Todd. I think that's a good number.
Todd, do you want to speak to teaching and learning, please?
Yeah, in regards to teaching and learning, we took a look at the several categories, particularly the categories that related to resources, textual resources. We cut from a particular area because we're just beginning the curriculum revision cycle around English language learners. So we're able to, we think this year, really focus on what that curriculum revision cycle looks like, and then put that off potentially to the next year. And then in professional development, we're moving through our K-5 literacy initiative and the money that we had budgeted. We feel like we can kind of bring that down a little bit for next year, so we pulled a significant amount off of that line around professional development as well, and can work with a much lower number for next year.
Pat, do you want to speak to the athletics, please?
Athletics, that's kind of like, you know, we're putting something off another year, we're going to wait, you know, we reconsidered a, a couple of items. One of them happened to be that dryer, and it was so much discussion about.
Tanya's going to have to take the dirty clothes again.
Clothesline.
She's talking about a clothesline.
So, but that's multiple things that make up that cut.
So that's where we're, that's where we're sitting tonight. So just to give you a flavor of where we're at right now, now, we, I would say to you again, 5.72, as it sits tonight, is still too much. That's still too high. So we've, you know, but you'll notice that we have not gone, and I think one of the things that we've kind of prided ourselves on a bit is that we have not taken money away from schools, like, we've never made deep cuts in our schools, certainly, certainly since I've been here. We've never made cuts to special education since I've been here. So we've, we've held those things pretty, you know, pretty much over there and not touched them, and tried to make other cuts around them. And so I would say that that's still our thinking. You know, we, we don't want to take the money away specifically from programming, or the kids, or supplies that are needed, that kind of thing. So, so we'll go back now. I mean, we're going to continue because these meetings continue all day, every day. It's not just a hit or message, he's going to, when we get together at 3 o'clock tomorrow, and poor Todd, we drag him into a number of these, not all of them, but we drag him into a lot of them right now as we're working through and, and appreciate his input as well. So that's where we're at in our process tonight, but we will bring something back different for you at the 13th meeting.
Okay. Questions or comments for Brooke?
This isn't the fun part of the process. I just put it down on the table. It's not, it's not part of the job. I really enjoy it, I'm not going to lie. Budget, I'm okay with cuts. I don't like making.
Anyone? I just, I, I... I just, and I just, I look at the numbers, and I know that they've come down from what they were, but they have a ways to go. You know, and I've said it many times, I would give every kid everything. We all would. Because I was where the principals were, just, this is what I want to, not my job to worry about the money, but now it is. But I just don't see how these types of increases are sustainable, especially for, when I look at what Lancaster, what their amount is. And when we talk about the asks, we're not talking about cuts, we're talking about reducing what we're asking for. I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
It's sometimes, well, you get to a point, though, I want to be clear, because every year, this kind of comes up, and right now, we're making a reduction in the asks, but you do hit a tipping point where it's no longer in the asks. And I've hit that point every year I've been here, and it goes deeper, and it's not just cuts to the asks. So I really want to be clear on that. I think that sometimes we dance around that a little bit, and that's just, that's not how it plays out.
Then two other thoughts that I have. One is particular to the conversation we had about starting to save up money for the gap year. And just from a building understanding around that, when districts, when towns are looking at increases to their own budget to support our budget, you know, how we justify that to them. I see it as a programmatic change, and that's the money that you need for that. So just something to keep in mind. But the other thing is, and I wasn't able to be at the meeting where it came up, but I always get concerned about looking at some of the high school classes with low enrollment, under thirteen. And I know how it works. You schedule kids in March, in October, what class that was at thirteen, oh, now they're at nine, and whoops. And I understand some classes, if you want to have an AP class, and when I was the principal, it was AP chemistry, nine kids, but are you going to cut it out? APE, adaptive physical education for special ed kids, those are small classes. But I think you need to, and it's a hard look, because again, you know, what are the specialized classes that, and, you know, you guys make that judgment, but they're nice to have, but can we afford it? When we're looking at other things that we want to add, and so, you know, you look for areas where you can save, and again, this was four years ago, that we had CrossFit at the high school with six kids in it, piano lessons, voice lessons. And I don't know if that's even there yet, still there, because I haven't seen, but we can't afford it. It's nice to have, but we can't afford it. So those are my concerns, that the number is still high. I know it's going to come down, but by how much? What are we going to get to that line? And what's the impact going to be on Lancaster and, I guess, Bolton?
All of our communities.
Yeah, well, no, I think Stowe's looking pretty good.
While Stowe this year--
It's their turn.
This year is looking--
We may have to give them money.
Yeah. I hope not.
That's not the way it works.
I was just saying, I just thought it was-- But anyway, those are, you know, those are just my concerns.
If I need to speak, though, I think one of the things that we can never lose, though, is when we sit around this table, and I know that you all know this, but I think it's always this time of year, we just want to reiterate, we see the cuts that need to be made. We know that there are X number of classes over at that high school that are still running. We use 12 and under that number that we use, right, as we track them. And we recognize that the notion of this is no longer sustainable. Man-on-man, it's hard on that staff when you go and you make those cuts. And it doesn't matter how many, and they say, I know this wasn't sustainable, but it still hurts.
Of course.
It still hurts that staff.
Of course.
And the truth is that of all the buildings, that's probably the stuff, in terms of just a logistics perspective, nothing else, just in terms of logistics, you look at that and say, wait a minute, this isn't sustainable. That is so unlike any of our other buildings. So unfortunately, that is where some of that happens. But it's, I'm just saying, we always have to remember that there are implications that happen after we do all of this.
Absolutely. And that's why this isn't fun.
That's right.
And it's not, it's sort of like an eye-opener, I think, when you get on this committee and this becomes part of it, and no one thanks you, I think. But that's, you know, it's our job. Elaine?
Oh, yeah, thank you for this, by the way. And I just want to say, to your credit, we were joking about giving Stowe money, but it's not as simple as the superintendent and the staff ask for certain things, and then the towns divide it into thirds and we pay for it. Like, the state gets involved a lot. Maybe everyone around this table understands that, but maybe for the people that are watching on the video, like, the state meddles with this a lot. There's complicated formulas, and there's things that sometimes we don't think--
Unfunded mandates.
Unfunded mandates, minimum local contributions, one of my favorite ones that I'm learning about right now. And so, you know, it's not as simple as saying, I feel like the superintendent does get blamed for a lot of it when maybe we should be directing some of that at the state.
I think that that's a valid point, and you know, and we're seeing that now, right, with our house numbers. Now, to the state, I don't want to talk, when I'm talking to the state, well, yeah, I guess I am. The state's credit, in some ways, though, right now, they are taking the recommendations. I don't know if you remember, but a couple of years ago, there was a commission that was established for the, taking a look at this whole Chapter 70 formula, right, and the funding formula. They made recommendations. I think to the credit of the state right now, they see, and we took part in a webinar the other day with DESP, it's clear that they're trying to transition to some of those changes. And I think that we'll see some positive things potentially in the next couple of years. But during this transition time, there are bumps for us right now, and we're feeling that right now. And I also appreciate the fact that you say the state, you know, I don't know if I would use the word meddles, but do they have say? Yes, they do. And I think you're absolutely right. I think unless you sit around this table, it's hard to understand the level, I don't even want to say influence, because it's beyond influence, is what they say is what you do. And you're absolutely right, so many of those numbers are formulaic. And I wasn't joking when I say, I think the only individual who really understands Chapter 70 seriously is the person who is at the core of that, because it's so complex. So I really appreciate you saying that because you're spot on with that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you. And thank you again. I know this isn't the easiest or most fun part of the job. I don't think it's fun at all, but thank you for doing it. Subcommittee reports, I think we only have one report. Steve?
The superintendent basically, you know, did everything. We had a meeting earlier this evening, and what we did is we discussed with the business manager the way we would like some of the numbers presented, to make it clearer and make it more understandable, we feel, to the committee. For example, rather than just going from an ask to an ask, really look at some of the, what have we, this is what we asked for last year, but it's been half a year now, and how much have we spent so far? You know, those kinds of things, because that gives us a better idea of how we should budget going forward. So that was, the majority of our meeting, this was a discussion, that kind of discussion.
Great, thank you. Okay, any correspondence, notes?
No one writes anymore?
They don't write, they don't call.
I know.
Okay, anything for the consent agenda, anything about the minutes from January 16?
I hope that they be accepted.
Okay, and I don't think we vote on them because it's consent, is that correct?
It's consent, okay.
And then please be sure to sign the warrants before you leave. And our last item, our items to be considered for the next agenda, budget-related, Lorraine wanted me to convey that we need information about technology needs, STEM scope, and facilities priority, with safety being the first priority, if you will, and other things that are non-negotiable. And then looking at other future agendas with no particular time or date, a philosophical discussion regarding texts versus ebooks and online resources, and a follow-up to the literacy presentation we had the last meeting, a timeline, or an update on what the other schools are doing. And then, and this is for me, if the schools are engaged in any comparable programs, the writers workshop, reader and writers workshop is focused on literature, but are they doing anything comparable for nonfiction texts and writing related to those texts?
I think that you'll find there's quite a bit of that, actually.
And I'm going to go dig in my dumpster, that is my document file on my computer, to come out. There's a name for one of them, and there are five components, but we'll do an even up dive. But it would be nice to know because I think it's important, it's the literature aspect and the nonfiction aspect. So it is 8:21.
Move to your--
Thank you. Wait a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you, everyone. Nice job. I appreciate all the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Probably all the snow has stopped.